Hello everyone. Uh, first we have a public comment on the agenda items. Go on. Uh, Michelle Obersen.
I think it's a non agenda item, so I'll watch that.
Thank you. Heather Armstrong.
Hi Heather.
Hi. So I understand that you guys had approved a school board policy specific to harassment and discrimination last time with the language to include information regarding gender identity along with sexual orientation. And reviewing the most recent policy and the minutes from last time, sexual orientation was not included in that. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention as it was my impression that that information was going to be in that policy because we want to make sure that all individuals in our district, staff, students, do not, you know, feel harassed in their environment. And we want it to be as representative of all of those that are in our community. Thank you.
Thank you Heather. Again, for anybody that came in late, we can get them back to gone. We ask you to sign it again. We ask you to sign it again for those who want to make a public comment on non agenda items. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Okay. Just for our superintendent's report. Again, we are preparing today's learners to become tomorrow's leaders with an emphasis on personal relationships and individualized learning. Our three K twelve learners will be our own most solid after candidates for college universities, the workforce, and the military for apprenticeships.
Dr. Sargent. Yes, I want to start my report celebrating middle schools. I'd like to have this big line cut up.
That would be great. So recently, middle school was designated schools to watch. I actually want to applaud this accomplishment. And there are essentially there's more criteria that they look at and it's like schools to watch. Organization, processes, academic excellence, support, develop their responsive responsibility, social equity. This been, uh, middle school did an entire day with the team that came in, talked to staff, parents, uh, softball eyes, students, teachers, and did a pretty comprehensive review of middle school. And they worked out the areas of schools to watch. We definitely want to celebrate that quite a accomplishment.
Sure.
So if they call out, try to read it.
Absolutely. Thanks for, thanks for being here tonight. I know you said the team and I will be presenting. I think the team got nervous when you said team and I, so they will not be presenting. They, uh, they did, you know, a lot of the redesignation application for, for me as well as, uh, spent a good hour with them that morning going over a presentation with the site visit team. So, uh, it is an honor. I do have members of the team here tonight, three of the five, in addition to myself. Have Sarah Workman, who's an eighth grade language arts teacher. She's kind of hiding down here. Alyssa Ward is our guidance counselor. And then Gina Whitaker is our special education department head, works with generally our seventh and eighth graders, but gets involved with everybody. So they were a big part of that visit. When you hear schools to watch, I think it's important that you as a board know and the public know that's, that's not a bad thing. We're not a schools to watch because we're on some kind of probation list. It's because we feel like we do great things here at the middle school and have a lot to share. We were designated initially in two thousand and eleven. Then again, it's a three-year process, two thousand and fourteen, seventeen, and for the fourth time got re-designated again in two thousand and twenty. There are fifteen middle schools in the state. They just added a fifteenth one, uh, earlier this month. So there's fifteen total middle schools in the state of Indiana that have that distinguishment. Doctor Cyverson talked a little bit about what they look for. It's four areas, academic excellence. I say it speaks for itself, but it's not all about, not all about test scores. We do have outstanding test scores at the middle school, but it's other things we do as far as remediation programs we have in place, honors program, offering nine credits for the high school. Just anything to do with academics in general is a big part of it. Being developmentally responsive is another domain. You think about middle school kids and some of the people in the audience have middle school kids. It's a, it's a tender age being eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. It's meeting their developmental needs, enjoying school, having teaming, having some of our character ed stuff, different clubs and activities we do have here at the middle school. So it's a plethora of things. Third one is social equity. Uh, we're a small world district, but just making sure our kids know that there's a great big world out there. I think some of the character ed definitely plays into that and things student, students get involved with in their individual classrooms, like for example choir singing songs from around the world, just showing that we, while we're not a diverse school district, we're trying to be a diverse possible and having our kids recognize again that it's a big world out there. The fourth one's called organizational structures and processes. And that's really just how your middle school is set up, having teaming, the way you schedule things, um, when you meet for departments, when you meet for team meetings, when you have professional development, late arrival Wednesday stuff. So really just everything and scheduling, master scheduling, everything that goes into making a school operate and you hope run pretty smoothly. So, um, they, you mentioned it, they came in, they spent a full eight-hour day here at the middle school. They met with our committee for a little over an hour, hour and a half or so. They met with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, they meet with parents, they met with some selected students, and I tried to give a diverse group of students. I had six, seven, eighth grader, male, female. I had some special needs students. I had some honor students, um, random group of parents. And then they selected a random group of kids. I give them little tickets and they hand them out to ten random kids. And I think the bottom line of that, I don't care who they give them to. Give them to who you want and let them tell you about the middle school a little bit. So it went very well. So they just picked out ten random kids. They speak to our custodians, our kitchen staff, our teachers, our aides, our nurse, our, you know, you name it. They spent the day just kind of hearing about Tri-West Middle School. So it's not just hearing from me as principal, it's hearing from everybody that really any stakeholder has anything to do with the building. Kind of from here where we go, it is a good way. You know, we're always looking for ways to improve, but every three years it really makes you take a, a long, hard look at what you're doing, at what you do well, what you need to improve upon. And then they state things that you can improve upon, which that gives us time to reflect too. And then, so we'll be working on their recommendations the next three years. And then this summer, we do get a chance to go to, to DC, present at the national forum. Uh, we'll take some members of the, the committee, not everybody, and we'll present and be recognized as, really, there's a small group that's, that's been re-designated four times. So that'll be a neat opportunity for us to be recognized and kind of share what Tri-West Middle School does. That's kind of the, the program in a nutshell. So if you ever have any questions, let us know. If you have questions now, I'll be happy to answer them.
Miss Tombea?
Well, I guess, we've been designated, we were initially in two thousand and eleven, re-designated three times every three years. So I guess it's going on its tenth year. So we're good through two thousand and twenty-three and then we'll, we'll, should get re-designated again, keep doing what we're doing, so.
Congrats, you continue to help.
Yeah, thanks.
Everybody heard this. The committee, they've been on and on and on about this school. So good job. Next, my report, I'd just like to spend a few minutes recognizing our teacher of the month.
We don't ever recognize our teacher enough. And sitting in my chair, I'm trying to do a better job of that as a district. And so we actually initiated a new teacher of the month program. Some of our schools already selected a teacher of the month. Now they all do. And what we do, we take all those winners, we put them in a pot every month, we draw a winner for free lunch with Mr. Ho Ball, myself, both of us. I'm sure they're thrilled about that. But anyways, just an extra incentive to do a little bit, it's not, obviously, something very small, but, uh, our teachers do tremendous work, which you can recognize. So I just want to publicly state that several teachers are on it. This month we'll do January, February, catch up over the break. But Lisa Starks, fifth grade, going through fifth grade. Tiffany Thomas, the fourth grade, third grade teacher. Adam Vaughn Trigger was the high school winner, English. Tann Dyson from primary school teaches kindergarten. Troy Harris, selected seventh grade, science from middle school. These guys do tremendous work and we really appreciate all of you. So congratulations. Vaughn Trigger got the free lunch, by the way. He loved it, he loved it. Okay, next update. We're going to talk about the new athletic buses that people are seeing, whether they actually use. So I just want to give you a quick update. Those buses are not district bill classes. Uh, bill classes were purchased as part of the new contractor, the former superintendent that put together the new transportation. And those, there are actually going to be four of those athletic buses. They're non-use for no trip because they don't have stop bombs. Can't use them to pick up kids on route. They've been well received. I know one of the girls' sectional, having that bus out there by the front door was nice. But anyways, we got on those buses that were purchased as part of the contract. We paid over the years to have that. So there's been some confusion on how all this goes down. So if you hear that, if I can move.
So just wanting clarification, the contractor supported that X amount of buses, four buses from the life contract.
Yes, it was submitted for those four buses we purchased over the course of.
And was that then decided on at one point?
Yeah, so I think there was a lot of conversation back and forth about the design of those buses. Um, and it was a long, three step, eight, four, five, six, seven, eight. So I think that was so back and forth, maybe for a certain thing, the transparency.
All right, now we'll move on to our consent agenda. The first, our one or ten attorney would like to give a statement.
Um, yes, I hear some, some comments to Mr. Bruce's termination advice not only intended in high, in high risk. Can you hear me now? Okay. That's it. Basically, what I'm doing is, is making a statement as to what the law in Indiana is. And I'll read this statement to you. Like all Indiana school district, Northwest Hendrix is obligated to follow an Indiana law, and that's under IC Indiana Code twenty days, twenty-eight days, seven point five, that provides teachers with due process, including a series of appeals. After school administration gives the teacher a written notice of their preliminary decision to cancel the contract, the teacher has five days to request a private conference with the superintendent. If the teacher does not request a meeting, the administrator's preliminary decision becomes a final decision and is given to the school board for its vote. If the teacher requests a meeting with the superintendent, the superintendent has ten days to schedule it. And then, just to expand on that, it's ten days to schedule it. The hearing does not have to be held within ten days. After the conference, the superintendent makes a final written recommendation to the school board. After the conference with the superintendent, the teacher has five days to request an additional private conference with the school board before the board makes its final decision. The board must hold the conference where at that conference, basically, the teacher and the school administrator, administration can present evidence and make a final decision within thirty days of the teacher's request for the conference. If the teacher chooses to proceed through the entire statutory process, it can take approximately forty-five days before the board makes a final decision. At any point in this process pursuant to the, to the law, the teacher can resign or the superintendent may withdraw their recommendation for cancellation of the contract.
Well, we want to, the consent agenda, some of our events, payment of claims, give some recommendations, fund report, payroll report, personnel report, approval of out of this year transfer. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second, President P, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Next, we have our action items versus the special education excess cost authorization. Dr. Sargent.
Yeah, I'm seeking authorization, basically, in order to approve signatures for this form. This reform was prepared since last back in October, April, first of October, so it never got signed, easily signed, committed to this form. Uh, it's for Ho Ball himself. Too many decisions made, uh, fourth board, making special education issues come up, uh, really, he was a bit, like, that guy's stuff. It also allows the IDOE to seek and collect the issue of funding for that. So I just need to get a room in the board to have a signed document.
Motion to approve the special education excess cost authorization. We have second, 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 ready, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Next, we have a celebration, it looks like, business manager change, title to assistant superintendent. Dr. Sargent.
Ah, hello. The committee comes out. It's my very honor to, the former president, Mr. Ho Ball, pass the superintendent's test with flying colors. Well done, Mr. Ho Ball. Thank you very much. So I'd like to register tonight, we can change this title officially from business manager to assistant superintendent.
I'll move to change title from business manager to assistant superintendent. Second, consent, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Next, we have a second reading and approval of policies, support policies of four thousand and one, forty-one hundred, approved, forty-one oh eight, and seventy-one thirty-two. Dr. Sargent.
Okay, so these are the policies we're just gonna have your ass board here at the second reading. Um, one of these policies, four oh one, it has been omitted actually, in the back, I think it's the one that we were referred to. So we're gonna have to circle back on that. None in this package, it shouldn't be. So we're, we're circling back to four oh one. Others are all in the package and have been looked at the second time, the last day. We've got to get a look at the community policy board on others. And then fire review has gone through the school board association, so, uh, second reading, I would see if you're approval on those, final look at the policies.
I'll move for approval of policies in four thousand, forty-one hundred, forty-one oh eight, and seventy-one thirty-two. Current P, second, current P, any discussion? Yeah, I guess, just for clarification, forty-one hundred does state something to that. Where was it at? Genetic information for that particular gender identity in that policy, is that my report?
Yes. That one, and also forty-one oh one, though it has that name. But I know it gets served about in particular with policy four zero zero one. It was by intent for that to do that name, you should go in there and be included as well.
And that will be then resubmitted for the March.
Correct.
Board meeting approval.
Yes.
Any other suggestion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Next is permission to void and approve outstanding checks.
Yes, this is something we do, outstanding every year. These checks have been outstanding for two years as I've been cashed. And, uh, we're asking for approval for each building, uh, certain checks were never cashed. So to allow us to clear our books on those checks, the people, we contacted and many of them responded, I lost it. And so we're able to clear those out and we can create the books to still, but we may have to clear off.
Yeah, I have a motion to official to void and approve outstanding checks. Next. Second, consent, any discussion? Uh, chief, all classes, we need to go through all the states. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Uh, discussion items.
Thousand twenty-one and twenty-two is a full count of options. There are so, um, so many factors to do, counter option, we're coming up with, without, uh, for feedback, especially if you have a question for that. We have shared these, uh, DC office, with our administrators, shared with the D C Association, that's the way, shared with all staff, everybody, we need to get their feedback. We reached out to our middle school, sort of looking at breaks, in particular, fall break, spring break, and shared for aligning the first center from middle school. And, uh, let's get it back to the, they make recommendations. So I think we're shooting from April toward the end, and not back to the three thousand people staff, we're only speaking to that. You know, that, including March.
What's the, P?
Yeah, so the first option, um, really interesting too, is the winter break. So the option one, winter break, actually at the start of the first day, before Christmas, so we feel a happy week, and then, and then in fact, we come back and back in the right time. Second option, we take a whole week off from Christmas, middle school will have the, um, and then that also, in fact, we will come back after the, uh, winter break. Other than that, they're very similar.
Do we see a gender difference all the way up to the back? I don't think there's an issue either way. It's good that we put climate in, pretty core time to visit big schools, so I don't think we lose this, that, that. Uh, next we have a patron request to request the board, sharing gun.
The purpose of my discussion this evening is to present to all of you the many concerns we, parents, and community members have and have had over the past six to nine months. I'm going to again reference the FAQ page and the district's acknowledgement that too little information forthcoming has caused misinformation, speculation, and mistrust to flourish, and the district's commitment to greater transparency. The most recent media statement by the district reiterates the board and administration's commitment to restoring trust. Over these next several minutes, I'm going to convey to all of you our many concerns and ask that you please evaluate the effectiveness of your efforts. I realize you will not participate in a discussion, so please know questions are rhetorical in nature, but feel free to answer if you would like. On October thirtieth, the district launched the FAQ page with the help of Ms. Donna Patraitz, a communications consultant with administrators assistance, whose contract was later approved at the November twelfth board meeting at a rate of seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. The FAQ was made to debunk rumors and misinformation, but our concern is that its actual intent was to create a political spin on any damning information that holds the board accountable and is damaging to its reputation. Mr. Williams recused himself from Mr. and Mrs. Bagley's hearing and in voting on their termination. However, he did not recuse himself on July ninth and voted to keep all three staff members on paid leave. The FAQ does not acknowledge these oversights, instead acknowledges only one. So we have an oversight of said oversights. Why? Because an oversight does not happen three times consecutively. Mr. DiAgostino, you also failed to recuse yourself from this matter. You voted in all matters relating to Mr. and Mrs. Bagley, your longtime friends, and participated in all votes regarding Mr. Bruce, another family friend. And as we all know, any vote not in favor of Mr. and Mrs. Bagley inherently was not good for Mr. Bruce. And in any vote not in favor of Mr. Bruce would not have been good for Mr. and Mrs. Bagley. Mr. Bruce being terminated means perhaps something did occur that was worth reporting to DCS and which Mr. and Mrs. Bagley reportedly failed to do. And termination, and terminating Mr. and Mrs. Bagley for failing to mandate report would imply perhaps Mr. Bruce did have inappropriate behavior with a student worthy of a DCS report that went unreported. In November, I asked you some questions in which you replied you would answer them at an appropriate time. I realize this is not a Q and A, but I invite you to answer our concerns on the district's FAQ page. Given the deep friendships and ties with all the employees involved, did you advise or counsel any of the employees in question during the investigation behind the scenes? This is a true concern for many of us. The morning following Mr. Bruce's arrest on January twenty-ninth, I sent an email to Doctor Cyverson, Mr. DiAgostino, and Ms. Patraitz, in which I expressed that in moving forward, the community was eagerly awaiting Mr. Cyverson's recommendation for immediate termination of Mr. Bruce's teaching contract. I received a prompt response from Ms. Patraitz. Unfortunately, legally, he cannot be terminated unless there is a guilty verdict. We have discussed at great length with our attorneys what our next steps are. I am not a legal expert, but I am certain that teachers can be terminated without having to be charged and convicted of a crime. That said, a few hours later, news broke that effective immediately, Mr. Bruce's status was moved to unpaid suspension and notice given that his contract will be canceled and employment terminated. Obviously, I was somewhat confused of this seemingly swift change in position, so I want to thank you and tell you I'm grateful, as I'm sure you all are, that you were able to get clarification on this and able to take action on what you find to be egregious conduct and contrary to everything the school district stands for. I would thank you for upholding our high standards and commanding respect from neighboring districts, but I'm afraid we have neither of those, as you are six months too late. The probable cause affidavit adds little to what we already know. We only now know Mr. Bruce damaged, destroyed, or simply did not turn in his SIM card to the sheriff's department. Are you surprised? Is that what you all found to be egregious? Because the remaining evidence and facts in the probable cause affidavit were known prior to July twenty-sixth and presented at Mr. Bruce's hearing. Can you honestly tell us that based on the information that you had at the time of the dismissal hearing, that you made a decision that was in the best interest of the school district? You had an admission of Snapchat messaging from Mr. Bruce, you had sworn statements and testimony from the student and family, you had witnesses who saw them alone in his office in the dark at a time when there were reportedly rumors of an inappropriate relationship, you had knowledge of a twelve fifty-one AM video call, you had a dismissal recommendation from a highly effective superintendent who had never brought any previous recommendations that you could not support, you had testimony that alleged his wife saw an inappropriate Snapchat message over spring break, and if you knew the sheriff's department issued a warrant for Mr. Bruce's phone and obtained it, then you also had that information to meet the preponderance of evidence to dismiss a probationary teacher. How can you say that you did not have enough information to act in the best interest of the school district? Now you know the prosecutor believes he has enough information to charge Mr. Bruce, but you did not anticipate that, or a probable cause affidavit with this information becoming public, did you? If it is egregious now, it was egregious then, which is why Mr. Springer brought you the recommendation, and you know that. You did not act in the best interest of the school district. You acted in the best interest of your family and friends. How did that work out? Surely you know this community does not and will not trust you again. The only thing more egregious than Mr. Bruce's behavior are the people protecting him. Mrs. Griffith, as a mother, and I believe a mother to teenage daughters, how did you dismiss a one AM video call between a grown, married, and employed man, a teacher and coach, having that kind of communication with a sixteen-year-old female student? Mr. Breilich and Mr. Peoples. At the December board meeting, you both. At the December board meeting, you both nodded when I asked if all employees would be held to the same standard and code of conduct. Had I known male teachers FaceTiming with their students at 1 a.m. was acceptable to you, I wouldn't have wasted my breath and bothered asking. So where do you all draw the line? I mean, if video calls are okay and we're going to be fair to everybody between a teacher and a 16-year-old student, then in all fairness, it should be okay for 10, 11, and 12-year-old female students too, right? They too can video call at 1 a.m.? So what are the community's concerns? Compensating a board over $10,000 last year to effectively tear a community apart and make our children and schools less safe. To have a board frivolously spend around $200,000 of our tax dollars from our very small community to protect your own interests. Meanwhile, construction plans are changing at your discretion while you oversee financial management of over $40 million in bond proceeds for long-term facility projects. The hiring of a new superintendent will soon be needed, along with the hiring of new administrative staff. Board policies need revised and have only been done thus far due to the public scrutiny and pressure. Your egregious incompetence and poor judgment gives us grave concern and no confidence that this board should be responsible for making such decisions on behalf of this community and our children. Again, we ask that each board member put the district and children ahead of yourselves and resign. This is the only way to restore trust and integrity. Please do the right thing. With that, many of us demand a moratorium on any decision-making regarding the previously mentioned items until a new school board is in place. Following this board meeting, I have a petition and a probable cause affidavit in hand and intend to lead a movement of collecting signatures declaring a statement of no confidence for this school board. Thank you.
Sharon. Uh, calendar items. We have a work session on the fourth, 17th, 7 p.m. in the administration. Our next board meeting will be on the 4th, 10th, uh, back here at the, uh, middle school. Okay, about public, the more comments on the non-agenda items. Cody Brooks.
As a community, we've all been living through this so-called more transparent, more honest, and more safe version of what you guys were supposed to be, um, which was stated after you failed to keep students safe from someone that suspected in our school of being a felon now. You thought that was all going to go away until a few of us caught you and didn't let it just get brushed under the rug. It didn't work out this time, like it has in the past with some stuff. And you guys know that we're putting a stop to your lying, covering it up, brush it under the rug attitude. The radical school board members are corrupt, your actions are terrible, and you know you won't win another election when it comes up, so you're pursuing an invalid, illegal, and ridiculous spending of money at taxpayers', on the taxpayers' dollar to wreck everything, and I'm tired of it, and I know more people in the school district other than me are tired of it. $200,000 to buy contracts out, insane. You guys had a guy that wanted to terminate it and get done with it and be done, but you had to pay him off because you didn't want to do the right thing. $40 million in projects is ridiculous too, and I really get hot about it when I hear that we're going to cut some healthcare from some staff. That's insane. But you guys don't care, because it's none of your worry. You guys sit up here and halfway grin and just don't care, like you are right now. That's right. We all watch you. You give yourselves a raise, and some people in the staff get major raises, which is ridiculous, when you're going to cut healthcare because you don't have enough funds. That's insane. You know, it's just pretty ironic that there's a thing up there that says, "Building a legacy, one broom at a time." Now, you guys are building legacy, all right, and it ain't one at a time. It's one, uh, one convicted felon at a time is what it's going to end up being. You guys need to get a grip on it and probably resign, because I'm telling you right now, the actions you guys have taken, you guys aren't worth the dirt underneath this building. Stop spending our tax money uncontrollably. Get a grip. None of you have one right now, that's for sure. One of you was too afraid to even show up, which is kind of ironic. Don't tell me what to do.
Next, we have, um, Cheryl Overston.
I've been off having back surgery, so they've all set all the, um, the timeline and whatnot, but, uh, we moved here in 1991, and I was very glad that we bought the only house in Northwest Henry Schools that we looked at, not the ones in Brownsburg. My second day of work as a new doctor, we were told in no uncertain terms that if we had any suspected abuse in any of our patients, anything, physical, verbal, sexual, no matter what, we had 24 hours or less to report it. To school, to CPS, to law enforcement, less than 24 hours or we would lose our license. In 29 years, I've had occasion to do that, three or four times. Once it was my own daughter, and it was a school, not really school official, was an assistant in the marching band. She was 13, my daughter. An assistant with the marching band had been talking to her, chatting with her over the computer. He was 18, recent graduate. Those days, we didn't have video. We just had whatever it was, MySpace or whatever. And we had software on our computer that, I think it was called Nut Nanny at the time, and it was redlining the Nut Nanny about the time he asked her what her bra size was. I printed it off and I brought it in. It took Mark Frederick less than an hour to fire him and contact Kristy Patterson. That's how you handle that. You have failed this victim, and there is no excuse. And I am furious. You know how I found out about this? I went to a graduation party in Brownsburg and talked to a coach from a different school. And he said, "Oh, and guess what? It's been going," this was in May, "it's been going on since January." I could not believe it. You have failed this victim, and there is no excuse. I have four daughters. I am furious. Once in junior high, one of my daughters had a friend whose father had cancer, and he wasn't handling it very well, and he was physically abusing his daughter, and I reported it to the principal, and he took care of it within 24 hours. That's how you handle it? You have failed this victim. How dare you? I have an instance in my own family, as many of you may know. I have followed this predator over years, across state lines, down through many marriages, and he has still not been allowed to be alone with children under the age of 18. That's how you handle this? Shame on you. Shame on you.
Yeah, this was supposed to be regarding an agenda item, so can I go ahead and? Yep, nope, you're fine. The funny thing is, Mr. Cyverson brought up the calendar issue, and so we did receive those today, option ones and option two, and I've worked for the corporation for over nine years, and every year I enjoy looking at these options just because I think it affects a lot of the teachers and the students and community members, and so food for thought as you look at discussing the calendar for the 2021, 2022 school year. I know, um, a lot of times we start, I know last year we started August 6th, and it was the latest time that we had ever started school, and, which was actually a good start date. I know the previous year, we started August 1st, and that is extremely early. I know a lot of other schools start in July, or I know August 1st has been the earliest we've ever started. And, um, I always hate when the kids go back to school that early, because, a couple reasons. One, it's still hot out, it's still summer, they still need to enjoy, you know, the summer vacation. Two, it is the state fair, and as you know, I am an avid 4-Her. My family's very avid in 4-H, and there's a lot of kids in this community and corporation that are 4-Hers, and in order for them to participate in the state fair, then they have to miss those couple of days, that first week of school. And I know Mr. Breelich had said, you know, a lot of these at the end of the school year, does that affect attendance, um, these different school days? And, um, as a matter of fact, yes, it does affect attendance at the beginning of the school year with them starting so early. So I've always proposed that we start back, you know, August 10th or 11th, and, um, there's a couple of dates that, looking at this calendar, that we could take out, and it's just, again, food for thought. February 7th, January 6th, instead of going back January 6th, they could go back January 5th, and the teachers go back January 4th. I've always wondered, um, why we take off that Friday before spring break, because it seems like we take off that Friday, then kids take off Thursday. If we take off Thursday, kids are going to take off that Wednesday. So we might as well just, you know, go Saturday to Saturday, March 26th to, um, April 2nd, it looks like. So there's another day. And then I noticed this, uh, calendar year, we have April 29th and May 2nd. That's again another four-day weekend, and so, um, again, I'm not sure why we need the four-day weekend. I know it's great maybe for teachers, but I know that poses some childcare issues, but also instead of taking out those two days, just go back later in August. So taking out those four or five days, you have a start date of August 10th, they have that first week of August, and you will still be done before Memorial Day. So if you have any other questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, yes, uh, non-agenda item. So we're all aware of the difficulties that we've had in the district due to, um, the investigation and now arrest of Tyler Bruce. One of the things that's concerning to me is the, um, the arrest for Adam Benner for failure to report. I don't quite comprehend as a parent why the two other individuals that were involved with the situation, um, did not meet the criteria for, um, arrest, given the situation and what was known about it. On another note, I feel like at this time, for the school board to be transparent, we need to have more in-depth policies in place for, um, what's the, the student-to-staff ratio when it comes to overnight visits. I know our kids are going to be doing a band trip, uh, choir trip down in Florida, so I feel like there needs to be some specific guidelines as to what's going to be followed and the protections that are in place for our kids. I think that needs to be known across the board. So, thank you.
Sorry, that's a long walk. I'm here just to, uh, express my support for the school board. I do not believe any of us thought this legal process in the Tyler Bruce case would take as long as it has. But I think there are many of us out here in this community that understand that perhaps your actions are constrained by that legal process and the fact that it has taken so long. So I really do want to express my, I guess, appreciation for the way you've conducted yourselves. It would be my, my gut reaction to just lash back, but I appreciate the fact that none of you have done that. It still concerns me, the public disrespect I, I've seen from people in this community, even now. Even now, it concerned me that that disrespect is being shown. Okay, in this community, in this community, in this community, we don't all agree with each other.
How about the disrespect?
I'm sorry, I'm speaking. That's my point.
How about our kids' safety?
I'm not addressing, I'm addressing the disrespect. I will say this, but it still concerned me the disrespect I've been seeing to you and obviously to me. So, uh, I appreciate it as one, as one constituent, uh, and please stay the course. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I would congratulate our little school on the, uh, earning the school to watch, uh, recognition again and again this evening. Uh, thanks to all the community who participated and donated to the, uh, Dollars for Scholars fundraiser, creating great opportunities for students and scholarships. And as your legislative representative by attending the IAS, we have legislative day today in the State House. There's currently 49 active bills which could impact, in education. It's a short session and expected to conclude by April 11th. And again, I thank Representative Jeff Thompson for his continued collaboration in the best interest of our school board. Any other board members?
See none? Any motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Ready? E, second, third, and key, all of you, say aye? Aye. Closest sign. Thank you.